Good evening and welcome to the February 14th Valentine's Edition of the Board of Education Meeting. Can you all please join me with a pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin with the report of the superintendent, Dr. Byrne.
Good evening and thank you for joining us for our February 14th Board of Education Meeting and Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. Tonight is our second open topics forum session of the school year and we will get to that immediately following our presentations. So tonight we will hear two presentations about specific budget areas for the 23-24 recommended budget. This week we will learn about curriculum and special education and at our next meeting on March 7th, we will learn about the technology, athletics, and facilities portions of the budget. While these presentations make it seem that the district's annual budget is quite siloed, it's important to remember that this is not how the school district functions in reality. The budget supports programs that are district-wide and serve the purpose of moving teaching and learning forward across the entirety. To illustrate this, I've created a few slides that demonstrate how some important themes resonate in everything we do here in the district, how they fit into our long-term strategic planning, and how they're impacted by external and internal influences. So this is a work in progress that I foresee revisiting sometime. So what you've got on the left-hand side are the current work that we've been doing for the last number of years and this year, and on the right-hand side you have work that we intend to be doing next year and beyond. So you see this through line from the left to the right. And the future won't necessarily just be this coming year in the 23-24 school year, but it could be beyond. So when you look, for example, and I'm not going to go through every single thing on the slide, I will be sending this to the board and posting it on Board Docs. The work with math and math in focus from kindergarten through 5th grade is now transitioning up into 6th grade and that work we've been doing. The work in literacy with the units of study in reading, writing, phonics, the word study work K-5, we've begun rolling out units of study and writing in 6th, 7th, and eventually we'll get there in 8th grade. The K-2 handwriting work that's coming down the road, there's committee working on that now, so we anticipate that work happening next year, and so on and so on. So when we look at like under science, we spent a lot of work on the implementation of the next-generation science standards. We will be in the process of redesigning courses based on the next-generation science standards that will impact the offerings across the different levels of secondary at middle school and high school. The world language work, you see that we're in the midst of work in redesigning curriculum for FLESS and 6th through 12th world language offerings because of new standards right now, and that work will continue next year and beyond. So this is just a picture of where we've been, where we're heading. It's sort of a modified version of that state of the schools last year that sort of walked us through the last number of years. And just to point out to the board, you see on the bottom left and the bottom right pathways. New to us in Rye over the last few years, we have the K-12 life skills pathway, the 6-12 engineering pathway, and we have the academy. Those are all new pathways that we put into place. We are investigating for future consideration, how could we, if possible, develop an IB, an international baccalaureate pathway for our students as well? So we've identified some schools and been in conversations with them and we'll be doing a site visit. So it's like an IB academy program that is set, it's a school in Pennsylvania, the only one we're able to find, and we're actually going to have a team going out there to look at that. We've been talking and building new courses in the visual and performing arts, new theater courses, new arts courses. Can we develop a pathway that would support our kids who have great interest in the visual and performing arts? And if we just go to the next slide, some other areas, and while they may not be direct curricular areas like the traditional subjects, if we think about how we've connected the work of our communication to the work of our instruction, you think about how our weekly updates are a fairly new tool that we use and our videos and our curriculum maps, all of those things help us to develop a greater understanding of our instructional programs and we'll continue that work. So if you recall, the curriculum mapping process started with the core courses and we've continued to add new curriculum maps. Our website, we've been working on upgrades on our website to share all of this information. And then with the acquisition of Blackboard by Final Site, we have some new opportunities to really make some significant improvements to our website because of that one step final transition to the, and one of the things when we were evaluating our website is we kept finding Final Site websites that we liked most and that we wanted to emulate and then Final Site Blackboard, which makes it a whole lot easier. When we think about the facilities and the operations, going back to when we started talking to the community about the capital project, we weren't just looking at fixing broken things. We were looking at developing instructional spaces to support the innovative instructional programming and allow us to do things that we could not do, that space was limiting us to do in the past. So for example, the engineering programs and developing tailored classrooms to support the engineering programs, developing that third-floor space to support the project-based learning of the academy. And then you see as you go down, the work that we've been doing in wellness and SEL and all of the mental health supports that we've brought into our system, where we intend to go with that, the different ways that we have really focused on the wellness of our students and inclusivity with the new offerings that we have available, and the fairly recently established SEL committee that will be working to review all of the efforts in SEL and wellness and make some decisions about do we pull this all together in some way or not? So I don't want to say that I know for certain that they'll be developing a plan, but they'll be looking at all of the different pieces that are happening and talk about what is the impact and how do we get better at that for the whole system? And then just on the bottom, you'll see these two little boxes, the external influences and the internal influences. And the external, we think about new standards, things that have been revised of late, the next-generation science standards, the next-generation ELA in math standards, and ultimately when the Blue Ribbon Commission at the state level makes their final recommendations about what the graduation measures will be going forward, if there's any change, that will have some influence on us. We look at our internal influences, which is our curriculum review cycle and meeting the needs of our Rye community. So when we talk about the work that we've done to foster greater sense of belonging and inclusivity, that is solely based on the needs of our community and what our students and families need in Rye. So those are the things that we'll constantly be looking at. But I wanted to do this because over the next couple of meetings, you'll hear presentations from all these different areas and perhaps this will help sort of connect those dots and visualize those linkages as we go along. So any questions before we jump right over to Tricia Murray and the curriculum presentation? Oh, we do open topics first and then the presentations, so my apologies.
But still, are there questions about the current slides?
Yes.
Before we jump, jump.
And I'll, we'll send you a copy, an email with this tomorrow.
Okay, and if, I think the slides are really helpful and helping to, for the community and the board to see the directional thinking of the district and so perhaps it could also be uploaded into our Board Docs.
Yes, it will be on Board Docs as well.
It could be reflective in that, that would be most helpful.
Yes, I do have to thank Colleen McGreevy and Sarah Durman, who I kept saying what I was trying to accomplish in doing this, and the number of revisions and the different iterations of this over the last number of days have been quite extraordinary. So thank you, Sarah, thank you, Colleen.
It's always helpful to have a good team, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we will move on to the open topics forum for the hearing of the public. This is the opportunity where the board goes out to the community, we come out from behind the table, and we will make ourselves available to the community for any conversations and topics. So we'll go ahead and do that now and we'll take a brief break to do so. Okay, thank you, everyone. We are going to move now forward to presentation and discussion number one. We will begin with the curriculum, with our presentation for the budget related to curriculum instruction and assessment. Dr. Murray?
Great, thank you. So tonight I'll be giving you an overview of the work that we're doing in curriculum instruction and assessment this year, so I can, so you can have a better understanding of the work that we're setting up for, for next year and see how it's all connected. And I'll lay out what's included in our budget for the 2023-24 school year. So everything that we're doing under curriculum instruction and assessment is very closely, very closely connected to the Rye commitment in terms of the kind of learning that we're preparing for, what kind of instruction for students in terms of fostering critical thinking, effective communication and collaboration, and also the kind of learning experiences that we're giving our faculty. It's always our goal to provide our faculty with high-quality, relevant and meaningful learning experiences. So for the, for this school year, for the 2022-23 school year, just to give you a reminder of what we're currently working on, we have a partnership with Haskins Global Literacy Hub, and the work this year with Haskins is really about learning more about the science of reading in terms of phonics and phonological awareness. And we are doing that work with all of our teachers, all of our general education teachers, kindergarten through 5th grade. When we first started this work a few years ago, we really were focusing on our AIS teachers, special education teachers, and we had a select group of general education teachers learning about Orton Gillingham. So now we've really expanded it this year, and we were excited to do so, and the teachers are really excited about learning about this work. And I've had a lot of requests from teachers to continue it because they're enjoying learning some structures and routines to use with students and they're seeing a really positive impact there. So we're doing work during, during Super Tens Conference Days and kind of throughout the year with grade-level teams on phonics and phonological awareness. In addition to that and literacy, we're also continuing our work with Teachers College Reading and Writing Project. There were new units that were designed and that we implemented this year in kindergarten, 1st and 2nd grade and reading. The units are very different. They embed a lot of phonics and phonological awareness throughout every mini lesson. It's the primary focus of every lesson, so it was a lot for our teachers to learn. They worked closely with our staff, with our internal instructional coaches and also the staff developers from Teachers College on that. And in addition, we've also been refining our work in grades 3 through 5 with the units of study with Teachers College. Math in Focus, we're continuing with that implementation. This year because we have a district-wide focus on critical thinking, the work with our math in focus has been just on that, on critical thinking, looking across the lesson at where are the places for critical thinking, what does a critical thinking task look like within that program? How do we provide different entry points for all learners to be able to do that type of thinking? And that's really been led by Carrie Winderman, our math instructional coach, as well as our consultant Shelley DeBeauz. And so this year we also took math in focus and are bringing it up to 6th grade, and so we started the professional learning with those teachers, with our 6th grade math teachers this year. And the work has just been around learning the Singapore math-based methods, looking at lessons that were modeled for them, they spent some time in some 5th grade classrooms, and then now we're at the point where we're mapping out these units for next year. So they're really learning what that curriculum will look like once they have a full implementation. They did get a chance to pilot some units this year as well. And world language, we started a few years ago creating what's called an agnostic world language curriculum. So it's one curriculum that you can teach with the skills and objectives that you can apply to any language that we have in our program. And so we've been designing this the last couple of years, now we have some new standards that, so we're tweaking that work a bit. The standards are, the one big difference is there's a large cultural component that we're able, that we're now bringing into our units and our courses. And again, looking at that cultural component from the, through the lens of critical thinking. We also have new science standards, the next-generation science standards. These have already, we've already implemented these, K-7, and then middle school, grades 6 and 7 are still kind of refining their new units that they've designed and focusing a lot of our energy around grade 8 right now, as grade 8 finishes up designing Science 8 and Earth Science. Those are based on new standards for next year as well. They're very rigorous, they have us chain switching from kind of traditional, more traditional science teaching to something that's phenomenon-based and really very, very hands-on, high level of critical thinking, where really by the end of every unit, they're making a claim about the phenomenon, why it exists, and they're supporting it with evidence that they've discovered. So it's really good work, they're, it's a really high, high-level standard, so we're excited about putting those into place and, but like I said, I want to, you know, I really thank the teachers because it's, it's a lot of time and thought that they're putting into some really well-designed units. And we're working with someone named Liz Mira on that. And then the academy at Rye, you recently heard a presentation on the type of work that they're doing, and the, for this year, they've been having professional learning on research methods. We have a course, actually two courses in both the 11th and 12th grade that involve research, and so they've been spending time with Diane Cunningham, thinking about what are the best ways to teach kids research methods. And so they've been doing that type of professional learning as well as learning how to use their innovative teaching space on the third floor. And they also have implemented a new advisory curriculum this year. So a lot, a lot of good stuff is happening in the academy. As I mentioned, we are focused on critical thinking this year. This is the learning that's taking place at all of our conference days. Our faculty meetings at the elementary, middle school, and high school level are focused on critical thinking. The teachers have had the opportunity to learn about what a critical challenge is, how to develop it, and they've been implementing the ones that they have developed at the conference days. And they also learned about what a thinking routine is and how to build that into their everyday instructional practice. The curriculum writing that's taken place this year through Curriculum Council, they, the teachers wrote and revised English 11 for English electives, and in addition, we've also revised a physics and precalculus academy course. I also want to take a few minutes and just talk through some committees that are currently happening. We have three committees going on, this kind of started this winter and then going into spring. One is a K-5 literacy committee, and there are really two goals of that committee. We're trying to establish a district-wide handwriting program. We realize that teachers are doing a few different things in terms of handwriting and we need a more comprehensive handwriting program, a consistent program across the district. So that's one thing the K-2 subcommittee is doing, while the 3-5 subcommittee right now is looking at the effectiveness of our word study program in 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade. We're using something called Words Their Way. Right now we're just evaluating to see, is it doing what it's supposed to do? Are we seeing growth in our kids and the assessments that we give, which are called a spelling inventory? So we're looking at that now. It most likely could point to finding a new program, which would then take us into kind of researching what programs are out there. I think that, you know, a few years back when Words Their Way was selected, there wasn't much out in terms, in terms of grades 3, 4, and 5, and I think that there is, there are more materials out there for us to look at. So we most likely will be going in that direction. There's a kindergarten-through-fifth-grade science committee, and this really came from two different places. One is that we have new maker spaces and we want to use them wisely and embed the maker spaces and the STEM activities into our science curriculum. That's one kind of reason that sort of started this committee. And the other is that teachers really are looking for a science program that is more hands-on, teacher-friendly, student-friendly in terms of materials. And so we went through a whole process of looking at what's working, what's not working with our current science program. We use Science 21. We looked at what are we supplementing with, why are we doing that? And so we are now kind of at the phase of looking to see what, what is out there, what could we possibly pilot in our classrooms that could meet all these requirements and hopes for a science program? And so the third committee is, is, has been formed, we have not met yet, the first meeting is next month, and that's our K-12 social-emotional learning committee. And there are three goals for that committee. One is to gain an understanding of the SEL work that is currently underway and to really understand where, where are the pockets of SEL that are happening and make sure that people on that, that group of people understand what that is, what it looks like. The next thing to do would be to create a vision for SEL that's aligned to the Rye commitment. And then we want, based on that vision and what we're currently doing, we want to identify next steps to create a comprehensive K-12 program is the long-term goal there. So that committee is starting this spring and will move into next year as well.
Tricia, could you just let us know who's on these committees?
Yes, oh, sure.
Like just general buckets, is it really administrators, teachers, their community members?
Administrators, teachers, parents on all of them. On the social-emotional learning, you also have counselors, psychologists, social workers. Okay, so that's the, kind of the background information. So for 2023-24, we have next steps at all three levels. So for the elementary level, we are going to be continuing our work with phonics and phonological awareness. As I said, we had a good start in terms of our general education teachers and there's, there's interest and kind of the need out there to continue that work, so we will be. In addition to that, we're going to be examining or piloting a new science curriculum most likely, but like I said, the committee's sort of mid-work on that right now. We will most likely be piloting a new handwriting program in kindergarten, 1st and 2nd grade. We will most likely be piloting a new word study program. So we have some new things happening at the elementary level for next year, including the budget. And then at the middle school level, we are designing interdisciplinary units of study in ELA and social studies. We're looking at designing with the ELA teacher on a team, the social teacher on a team, kind of doing a double-block interdisciplinary unit, all focused around research-based argument essays. We looked at the kind of writing our kids are currently doing in middle school, and that was an area that we could really bump up the level and gives our kids some, some really in-depth, more rigorous experiences in terms of the type of research writing that they're doing. So that's a focus for our middle school for next year. We'll continue our math PD in grade 6. We started kind of learning about the Singapore methods this year. Next year is really about implementation and kind of in-class coaching as they put the curriculum that they have mapped out into place. We'll continue with our science professional learning around NGSS at the middle school, focuses, I said, primarily in grade 8 as those new standards roll up to that, that grade level in Science 8 and Earth Science. We'll continue with Challenge Success, that's a program we've, we've had, you know, in our district for a few years now. I'm guessing that will continue to be part of our SEL program and will be part of the SEL committee's work. And we'll also continue our work with world language and developing courses for years, year 3 and year 4.
And Tricia, I just wanted to note, so there's other work, these are the, the newer things that'll be happening. There's the work around FLESS and world language that was happening, those things will be continuing.
Yep, yeah, so yeah, I don't think I mentioned FLESS before, maybe I did, but, so FLESS was redesigned, started this year, will be also continued to, we redesigned the four units this year and we're going to be putting them into play for next year and, at the elementary level. And then for high school, we'll continue to have our curriculum review, review process and design new courses based on it. You heard Dr. Byrne talk about, you know, our visual and performing arts pathway, so I'm anticipating some more courses in that area will probably be proposed to the Curriculum Council. We'll continue our science professional development for NGSS. And the high school, that will be focused primarily around living environment because that will be the school year that those teachers are preparing for the standards to come their way. Challenge Success will most likely be connected to the SEL committee work, and the world language 3 and 4 would impact the high school as well.
Tricia, can I ask a question about middle school?
Sure.
For math, did you say, is this, is this math in focus?
Yes, it is.
The curriculum?
Yes.
So just like the elementary school, same textbooks, same philosophy, where there's challenge, there's challenge areas and there's more ability to, if a, if a child is completing the task, to work ahead?
Yep.
The teacher has those resources?
Correct.
Okay, great. And then for science, I heard you say, Science 8 has been rewritten? Is there, and you have here, grade 6 and 7?
Yes, they were rewritten already.
Okay.
Yeah.
I see, okay, great, thank you.
It just, we've done, we've done 6 and 7, so now we're really focused more as we implement those, we're implementing grade 6 and 7, so kind of still have that up there, but a lot of our work's focused on Science 8 and Earth Science as those standards go up to those grade levels.
For next year?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Tricia, just to stay with the science for a minute. I know that during the course selection for this year's current 7th grade, that there was some mention about changes to the program, perhaps not necessarily for 8th grade, but with a look ahead to 9th grade, in, with some unknowns about what exactly is happening with the science standards and as they relate to perhaps the coursework that needs to be evolved and written based on these standards. Does it seem as if kind of that will be, not next year, but it's then that group that will then be freshmen, that in two years really, there could be some impact into the greater curriculum?
You know, there are some adjustments that we were talking about making right now. We're not currently making any, any adjustments there. We were, we were thinking about the math standards and whether or not the math was going to impact the new science standards. So it was really about asking questions around would the math match up to our science courses? That was kind of a concern, maybe a couple of months ago. Right now, where our plan is to keep Earth Science in 8th grade, Living Environment in 9th, and then Chem and Physics, there wouldn't be any difference.
But there are some changes within those courses of Earth Science and Living Environment based on the new standards?
Yes, absolutely. It's the same phenomenon-based teaching that I discussed before, they've got these things called cross-cutting concepts, it's a whole, that's why it takes so much time to redesign the courses, because there's a significant change in the standards. But in terms of our coursework, that wouldn't, it wouldn't, you would have an adjustment.
And if we link back to the external influences that I spoke about earlier, both Earth Science and Living Environment or Regents courses, that's a big unknown right now, is where the state will be going with Regents exams and the graduation measures. So there, there could certainly be some impacts down the road. I know the Blue Ribbon Commission is due to have a recommendation to the Board of Regents by the end of the summer, and then we should know, this summer, they accelerated the project by a year and recently told the commission that our recommendation will need to be to the Board of Regents by September. So that will be coming.
And then the last part is that we started to work on critical thinking this year. We're not done, that will, that will continue into next year, and it's kind of just to be expected. It's a, it's a pretty large topic and we've kind of just started to scratch the surface on it. So for next year, we will, we will be continuing our learning walks as part of our professional learning model, continuing to talk about critical thinking during faculty meetings and conference days, and as we redesign new curriculum, making sure that we're including the critical thinking tasks into those, into that curriculum and those courses. So all of the, the work I kind of just outlined really builds upon the work that we're currently doing this year and expands it. And there's the funding for the 23-24 budget.
And this is at snapshots, so there are things that have not been expensed yet?
Correct.
Because they haven't happened yet, so when you look at the because they haven't happened yet. So when you look at the actual expenditure or the projected expenditure at this point in time, that projected expenditure will change as some of the work that has not yet made it to the calendar will be occurring.
That's right.
Any questions?
Great, thank you. This is a very comprehensive presentation and always nice to be able to see, as Dr. Byrne was talking about before, those through lines, right, and the carry-through and the intentionality of where we're headed and based on what the experiences our students have had and our classroom teachers have had as well. Are there questions from the board?
I just wanted to throw out there that, and I expect this will be coming, that as the next-generation science standards are kind of rolled out, that there'll be like some communication around that to families and students, obviously students will get it, but to families so that they have a sense of what the differences are when they're trying to figure out, you know, as they're looking ahead to like courses that might be coming, especially from the middle school into the high school.
Yep.
And because it sounds like from what you're saying and then even just from going through course selection process, there's been note that this is some significant changes. And so just to kind of help people understand what those are.
Yep. So as we start our course selection process, our department coordinators create videos or slideshows that outline courses, so that would be included. So for an eighth grade, for example, it was talked about the new standards are coming for Earth Science. So what you'd see for next spring's course selection is a full explanation of what that new Earth Science course would look like.
Great.
And we always have the parent-university capabilities to.
Yeah, absolutely.
For parents. Great. Thank you.
Tricia, when you look at the budget, it seems like the numbers are low relative to like what the full curriculum would look like for the whole district. Is that because some of this is like digital curriculum and it's not really textbooks? So it doesn't show up in this budget?
Well, we don't always have a textbook for every course that we have. I mean, there are certain consumable textbooks we buy every year. But some of, that's not really across the board.
What you'll also find is there, you know, there was a huge investment for the Math in Focus materials when we initially bought it. That's a much smaller annual expense. And at a certain point, the expense moves from the central office, from Tricia's budget, to the buildings for any consumable materials.
Got it.
This also doesn't cover salaries, so.
No, just I was looking at like the textbook line of $60,000. That just seemed, I would imagine though, if there's a digital curriculum, it might not show up here, it might be in.
A digital would show up in Caitlin's.
Caitlin's budget.
Yeah. And it's totally dependent if we're actually purchasing any texts on a given year, which is not always the case.
But what is included in that line are the new handwriting textbooks if we would have to purchase those as well as the word study?
Thank you.
To that end though, with a move to the Math in Focus in the sixth grade, is the textbook series different, significant? Because there was such a massive outlay in the original implementation of the K-5. And so then for a sixth grade pickup, it doesn't seem as if there's a significant kind of a cost reflection.
Not for one grade level, there would be.
Okay.
And then just one last, I know that we've talked a lot about the impact that Math in Focus has had, K-5, and then also now as we're rolling it into sixth grade. At this point, seventh and eighth grade does not seem to be in any need of any updates or changes as a result of those, of that implementation.
It seemed that when we had our math committee last year and looked at student data, the need was more in sixth grade at that time and that the seventh grade and eighth grade programs were showing good improvement on.
Okay, great. Anyone else? No? Okay, thank you, Dr. Murray. Okay, we will move on to our next presentation, which is the Pupil Personnel Services and Special Education and Dr. Friedenberg.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone. I will go through the same type of system that Tricia just went through, but I'll go through in regards to pupil personnel and special education. So as everything we do here, it is rooted in the RYE commitment. So all of the programs, supports and services that comes out of, my department really does support this in all the different areas. And though most of what I do is special education, any ways in which I can support the needs of all learners within the district really is the best way to support all of our students. So some of the programs that you'll hear about are different things. You might wonder, why do they fall under mine? And there is a lot of crossover between what happens out of my office and then certainly for curriculum and instruction. So for tonight, I'll just go over some of the highlights from this school year, talk about the goals for next school year, and then give a brief budget overview. So there's many, many things that I would love to highlight, so I chose a couple that I thought you'd like to hear about. So the first one is, we'll go right on a little ride on our map through the year. So the first one is the Garnets class at the high school. So this is something when I first came here four years ago, we identified that there was a need for us to really look at our programming K-12 for our special classes. So whether that's considered life skills or students that really require, you know, a smaller setting with really the focus of daily living skills within their curriculum, this needed to be expanded into the high school. So we didn't do that to start. If you remember, we actually took a year so we could really plan for that. And the students did stay at the middle school for that extra year, which parents were happy about. And I think really was a really good decision. So we had their, in their first year now at the high school, and Amy Osuli is the secondary supervisor and Allison Gunn, who's the teacher, really have worked closely to develop the curriculum. So we're looking at this curriculum, it's really over, up to six years that students can be here. So for four years, they will be, the students will be in the high school. The first two years really with a focus on work readiness skills, acquisition of communication, language, getting acclimated to the high school. Years three and four will really focus on a vocational experience of some sort, whether that's in the community with a work-based learning experience or through our Southern Westchester BOSIs with our career and technical education. And then the final years, depending on what would be best for a student, is looking at a partnership with Westchester Community College and allowing them to have a college experience, though still working on their individual goals. So a lot of work has gone into that. They really have been embraced within the high school. So I'd like to thank everyone there, from the administration, faculty, you know, staff, all the way to the students. Everyone really has gone above and beyond to help make this a very meaningful experience. The next thing is the Haskins Lab Partnership. So that's something that we've now had several years and is now into special education. So with the help of Devin Kearns, we have trained all of our special education teachers in DBI, which is our database individualization, where we are progress monitoring our students in specialized reading once a week. So they get instruction and then we're really looking at the data and closely monitoring how students are doing. We also have identified a program for our specialized reading program. It's called the Spire Program, and this was at the recommendation with our Haskins Lab Partnership. So that began back in October. All of our teachers that teach the specialized reading did get the training on this and are implementing it. We do have the support of Haskins Lab that has come through, has come in, we have them four times a year, but for a full day to go over what DBI is, what that looks like, how to look at the program, Spire Program that we're using for reading, as well as really looking to see how we can make sure that all of our students are making progress in reading. I'll kind of skip over one because it's connected to integrated co-teaching. Another programmatic change that we did make this year is that our co-teachers at the elementary level are also the teachers that are doing the specialized reading. So one of the things that we had received some feedback on is that students, there was really a disconnect between what was happening in their specialized reading program and what was happening in the classroom. So now that it's the same teacher, there is carryover skills in the work that we're doing in the Reading and Writing Workshop that can happen during the win time, during word study times. There's a lot of opportunities for us to make sure that the carryover of those specific skills really are being infused throughout the day. The next thing that we had, we started with supports with Effective School Solutions. So you've seen that a couple of times. So ESS we brought. That was an organization that we brought in during COVID to support our mental health needs within the district. And we realized that we also had an identified need here, the secondary level, to support our students' social-emotional well-being and the mental health of the students at both the high school and the middle school. So Effective School Solution works in local districts and really helps to provide tier-three supports. That's our highest level of supports. It helps to develop a program so that students don't have to look elsewhere that might require a therapeutic setting. So that is up and running in the middle school and high school and has been successful. It's the first year of implementation, so we're kind of working through the kinks with that, seeing what students are really benefiting from that. We have, you know, kind of a referral process and how we can really meet the needs of the students. So that has been successful. So we plan to continue with that as well for next year. In regards to partnerships, there's various partnerships that we have with outside organizations that we will continue with, and you'll hear a little bit more about those. But it's important for us to really identify areas of need or professionals that can really support all of our learners within the district. So we have partnerships, for example, for students with autism, the Institute Center for Students with Autism, the Institute for Children with Autism and Related Disorders, so ICA, we use them as a behavioral consultant, offering different levels of support. We continue to partner with CBC of Westchester, so Cognitive Behavioral Consultants of Westchester, to help with our DBT, dialectical behavioral therapy skills. We love acronyms. So these partnerships are really essential to supporting the needs of all of our students and really allows us to have the experts in the field to help our staff to grow their learning. So I'll go back to co-teaching last, but if we go down the road to professional learning, which is linked to the partnerships. So one of the things that we continue to provide for is professional learning for all of our teachers. So based upon individual disabilities that students may have, just really, how do we meet the needs of all of the learners within a classroom? So we have partnered with GNR, who has provide integrated co-teaching. So Linda Flanagan at the elementary level has really developed what that coaching looks like for those teachers and how they're developing their lessons and working with our outside consultants to provide the best co-teaching experiences for all students in the classes. And then Amy Osuli at the secondary level has really worked to develop really professional learning that has been teacher-led. So they were able to choose in areas that they thought they wanted to improve upon. And then we actually tailored their professional learning to meet their needs. The other thing in working with Tricia and just our instructional coaches, there's really been a nice shift in focus on meeting the needs of all of our teachers for both general and special education. So when we're looking at coaches going in, it's not always just about content, but it's about access to that content. And when we're developing curriculum, we look to see how can that curriculum be scaffolded? How can we meet the needs of all of the learners? So whether you are really, you need the extra challenge, you know, there's curriculum developed for that. And then for students that actually you need extra practice or reteaching. So any curriculum that we do or curriculum development, we always have that in mind for all of the learners. And as we have continued this year is just the integrated co-teaching. So really looking of how we can bring that to the next level. How are we really providing the small group instruction? How are we looking at data to make appropriate groups and meeting the needs of all the students? Because yes, we know that there are students with disabilities in those classes and they have to be in those classes. But there's also other students and there's a variety of different needs. So really looking at the data, looking at the curriculum, and how are we overcoming those instructional barriers to meet the needs of all the students in the classes? So for next year, we plan to continue with all that wonderful work. So we will continue with the program implementation for the Garnets class at the high school. As you know, each year is a new learning experience. But as that happens, we know that we are leaving behind, we have the curriculum now that's developed. So every year with that, you know, we always will look to see if there's going to be students that are moving up. There may or there may not be. So we'll always make those decisions based upon what's best for the needs of the students and obviously along with the families to meet their needs. We're going to continue as well with our therapeutic support services at the secondary level as well. Again, these are just two to highlight that we're going to continue with because they're the newest things. We will continue with all the great work around, you know, the reading, which will come under professional learning, but also the co-teaching as well. In terms of professional learning, we'll continue to support the social-emotional needs for our students. So both inside and outside of the classroom. We will continue to support the needs of students in the least restrictive environment. And this is really looking at how can we best develop curriculum that meets the needs of all students so that they can have access to the same curriculums as general education peers? And then also continue our work with the Haskins Lab and the database individualizations and really looking at that data to see how we can best meet the needs of our students, especially those struggling with reading at the younger grades. Additionally, we'll continue with many of the partnerships that we have. So the Effective School Solutions, I spoke about that, to support our TSS, our therapeutic support services at the secondary level. The Holistic Learning Center has been helpful in developing our life skills program, K-12. So they come in and they are here once a week and really look at our curriculum. And we're going to look, continue to look at that and how, now that we have the Garnets class at the high school, to make sure that we continue to go back to say, how is it all aligned, K-12? Also, the Cognitive Behavioral Therapists of Westchester, as I said, CBC of Westchester, to continue the implementation of DBD. I think some of that focus might be at the elementary level. We've done a lot of work at the secondary level. Again, but that's going to be working with our SEL committee. But they are still an organization that we'll continue to work with. ICA of Westchester that I spoke about, and then GNR Inclusive Group as well. Those are just a few that we work with. And to do all of that, this is the budget. So if you have any specific questions, just to point out, as Dr. Byrne already did, but that you'll see we are keeping consistent with our budget to meet the needs of our students. And I know one of the questions that always comes up, but do I have what I need to program for all of our students with disabilities? And as you always have been very supportive of all of that, I do feel that with this, I can continue to provide what's necessary for all of our students with disabilities within the district.
Great, thank you, Dr. Friedenberg. Any questions from the board?
I just have, I have one specific one. Just what is non-stack summer? It's the $15,000. So I just don't know what that is.
Sure. So there's different categories where we get money back from the state. So stack is one of the ways in which we get the state money back. So there are some times that we provide different programs or different offerings that it's not stackable. So we have to budget for that in our general fund so that we can continue to provide a robust program for those kids during the summer.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment to make that I think the alignment between and among the curriculum, instruction and assessment and pupil personnel services and special education is worth something that should be highlighted more than we give ourselves an opportunity to do. In many districts, they are seen as two distinct and separate, I don't want to use that word. I don't want to use that word, categories, functions, I think perhaps would be the best word. And in this district, there's clearly a partnership, a shared commitment. And Dr. Friedenberg, I think you said it really well when you said that your job is best served when every student's needs are met in the district and certainly not at the taking away or shying away from the needs of any of the learners. And I think it's really wonderful that there is such a commitment between your two departments. And it really is a, speaks to great leadership and it speaks to a great dedication to ensure that all needs of students are being met. And so I really do thank you both for that.
And I just want to highlight that as well. Thank you, Jane. Erin mentioned the staff developers working with all students and not just general education or on content. It's always nice when the PD team, as we call it, the staff developers, Erin, Caitlin, Tricia, that big conference room is filled with the whole team that's working to support all of our kids across technology, curriculum, instruction, assessment, special education. So it's really great to see that, that group doing that work to create that alignment in our system, K-12. You know, years ago, we talked about trying to get alignment in our schools, across our schools, in our buildings. And it's a really great place to be as we continue that progression. And, and having the leaders and the, the coaches aligned as well makes that possible. So thank you for your support and, and allowing us to do that.
Yeah, I would just sort of make a similar comment in that over the last several years, we've talked a lot about the foundational work that has, that has been created and built upon. And, and it goes to the partnership between all of the administrators. And I think that what we're seeing when we talk about how, whether it's the circle or the road.
Or, or the list.
We'll get that.
We'll get you a graphic.
You are an individualized learner. We have supports.
I mean, I think, I think what it shows is that there was a lot of, there was a lot of learning that happened four to five years ago. There was a lot of just evaluation of how, where, where are we and where do we want to go? And I think we're still doing that. And we see that in the list. But we also see where doing that and building on it and putting all that hard work and alignment and professional development, which is key to all of this, and not backing away from that during the couple of years in the pandemic where that could have been something that, you know, that could have been a choice that was made. And I think it was crucial that it wasn't. And I think it's what it's showing is that that's the, all the fruits of that labor we're seeing in how the, the instruction is just working so well together. And, and we're in a place where we are doing more current evaluation, review, change, implementation, update. That wasn't always how it was. And so I just want to compliment all of you on all of that work that went into getting us to this place and continuing to do so. Because it's that review, reflection, how do we get better? It's, that's the whole goal of what we're doing. So thank you all very much.
And I think related to and building on that is that doing it when we look at a budget that is not a budget that is filled and overflowing. It is a budget, when you look at both of your budget breakdowns, there are minimal increases from one year to the next, but continuing to provide the same level of programming, the level of meeting the needs of all of the learners at a rate that is, you know, fiscal, fiscally minded, but very still focused on our students and on providing the best educational process possible for our kids. And that is through that data instruction and evaluation that came through in both of your presentations about looking at programs, how are we implementing? How have they done? Where can we go better? And being responsive at the same time to hearing things that are out in the general world related to the science of reading and to handwriting, and still realizing and knowing and figuring ways to work those things out in a cost-effective way that's still really benefiting on all of our students is a great, great thing to see. So thank you both.
Okay, we will move forward with our agenda. We typically would have the hearing of the public. We had our open topics. And so we will move to our consent agenda. So can I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda? Vivek Kamath, seconded by Kelsey Johnson. Let's take a look at the consent agenda. Consent agenda, general. Consent agenda, fiscal. Consent agenda, professional appointments.
Jane, I had a question about 11.06, athletics. Are these new positions? I know like unified basketball. So are these new sports? Or are these just, or some re-upping as coaches? Do you know?
No, they're not, they're not new sport, oh, sorry.
Okay. Is unified basketball new?
Unified is new. Everything else are either appointments that we weren't able to do at the reorg. Or since then, you'll see a couple of rescinded appointments where folks have decided that they're not going to come back, where we did appoint them at the reorg meeting and they didn't come back as coaches. And so we.
So it's just a modification?
Yeah.
Okay. And what is volleyball? Just curious because that's a fall sport. And I know we're starting boys volleyball, but that I, I thought was a.
I'll have to get back to you on that one. I'm not sure.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Consent agenda, classified. And consent agenda, special education. Okay. Can I have a vote to approve the consent agenda? All those in favor? That would be seven, nothing. On this evening's consent agenda, we approved, as Dr. Murray talked about earlier, was the lang, was part of the world language consultation and looking at all of those pieces. And it's great to see us examining and reflecting on our best practices and our use of data. And for me, what was really, as I was looking through it and thinking about it, is really that good teaching expectations in all content areas. And so, so often we talk about math and science and reading. And we don't talk about our other core areas. And world languages certainly, as our world changes, really important piece of, an experience for our students. And so it's great to see the district's commitment to that. We also have the establishment of our Board of Registration. So this, for you residents who are not yet registered, but you want to be a voter in Rye on April 26, this allows us to have two of our own employees who can work as, on behalf of the Board of Registration, and they can help register you. So for those of you who are not yet registered but would like to vote, April 26 from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. will be your chance.
Or they can always go and register.
Well, of course, but it's so much easier just to come to the board office. But now.
But there's several options.
Yes, you can, you can go to see the very fine people at the White Plains office, which isn't far from the target. I like them quite a lot. They're quite nice there. You can just mail it in. You can wait and see our wonderful, fine staff on April 26. And then you can find the office because there is now a sign right next to the parking lot for the building. So for those of our residents who've had difficulty finding the central office, please come on by. In addition, the Rye Middle School PO has two generous donations, one in the amount of $120,000 gift for furniture for 12 of our classrooms, which will be exciting to see. I know Jen and I had an opportunity to be in the iLab last week for a professional parent meeting. And it was great. The furniture in there is really going to be a wonderful addition to that space. Also, there is a $4,500 donation for an assembly with Javier Sanchez. And the takeaways that I took for what he will be talking with our kids, grade six through eight, smile, be thankful, and leave people better than how you found them. And I think that will be an amazing experience for all of our sixth through eighth graders. So we look forward to that. And last, but certainly not least, we have the retirement this evening of Vanessa Kravitz. It is with sadness that I announced the retirement of longtime Rye High School English Language Learner/Teacher Vanessa Kravitz at the end of the school year. Ms. Kravitz has been with the district for 19 years, having joined the Rye City School District in 2004 as an ELL teacher at the middle and high school. Over the years, Ms. Kravitz was an ELL teacher at Rye Middle School and Rye High School, taught at the Rye Middle School Summer Literacy Program, and served as a teacher mentor. Since 2018, she has worked exclusively at the high school. Before coming to Rye, Ms. Kravitz spent eight years as a district-wide ESL teacher in the Irvington Public Schools and two years as an ESL teacher at PS 106 in the Bronx. She began her career in education as a teacher aide in the Scarsdale Public Schools. Ms. Kravitz has a BS in Business Administration and Marketing from Mercy College and an MSED with a major in ESL from the College of New Rochelle. Rye High School Principal Suzanne Short said of her, "Having worked with Vanessa for 19 years, I can tell you that she is a passionate, dedicated, and inspirational person. No conversation is ever too difficult, and every student is important. Vanessa loves the students with whom she works and her colleagues, and her spirit will genuinely be missed in the high school." In her retirement letter, Ms. Kravitz said, "Teaching here in Rye has been the most enjoyable of my 27-year career. I will miss being with my colleagues, friends, and most of all the students that I have helped along the way. I hope that my tenure here will be remembered fondly. I will never forget you all for sure. As we all know, the best people work in Rye. We wish you, Mrs. Kravitz, all the very best in your retirement." We will now move forward to information and discussion policies. Mrs. Boyle?
Thank you. So we have a slightly smaller list this week than we've had the last couple. This week, we have two different policies. The first is actually our code of conduct. And there was a change that was made. I'm just going to open it up. The change in, because this is a fairly, fairly large document. This is on around page 11. It's 5,300.6. So if you page down, you'll find the actual section that we made changes to, which is the corporal punishment section. And this was a result of an update to reflect a New York State law regarding the development of, stating that you have a written protocol to specify providing notice when there is an incident of any kind of restraint, physical, that might be used. So you'll see in here the addition of that language. And the green is the sections that are new. And the red, that's also has a strikeout. We're trying to work for everybody to be able to read it well.
I will tell you, I am very appreciative of the changes. Thank you.
Those are the pieces that will be removed. So you'll see that it talks about the process around what happens if there is an instance, although it specifically states that it is, any kind of corporal punishment is prohibited. But in the instance that there is any kind of restraint that is used for different reasons, it outlines what happens. Any questions? Okay. So we will move that policy forward for a second reading at our next, at our next meeting. And then the second policy is the, is policy number 9645, disclosure of wrongful conduct. And this was a policy that came, as recommended changes came down from the New York State School Boards Association. And part of it was to make sure to clarify and include specific information for, it was a change to the civil service law, for employees to be able to go, they don't have to go directly to the superintendent or their, the administrator they report to. They can actually, are encouraged to go to the state directly if they see something that is concerning. And, and there's a specific section also that has been outlined here around, that applies to testing, specifically to testing that did, did not exist before. So again, green is new, red is removed.
Jen, I just found one typo. Can I just email it to you?
Oh, sure. Definitely.
Or do you want it now or just email it to you?
Just email it to me. That's fine. Any questions? No? Okay. So I will get the typo changed. And then we will move it on to a second reading at our next meeting. And that is it for policy.
Thank you very much. So we will move on to communications to and from the board. And as we can see, the most recent meeting that was held was our policy meeting, and we've just received an update. As such, we have had no other board meetings or meetings of the district where board members are, have seats. So, but we will and can expect to have an update from the Curriculum Council at our next board meeting because our next board meeting is not until March 7. At that time, it will be our Board of Education Service Interest Meeting. So any members from the community who have an interest in serving as a Board of Education trustee, that would be an opportunity for you to come prior to the board meeting and have an opportunity to speak with members of the board about the work of the board. And we can answer any questions that general members of the community have. In addition, then, we will have our Board of Education Budget Work Session, and we will have presentations for facilities, technology, and athletics.
Yes. And the Service Interest Meeting is at 6:30 preceding the board meeting here in the MPR.
Correct. Yes. So is there any other information to and from the board? Okay. Seeing none, we will adjourn our meeting with a vote. So motion to adjourn our Valentine's Day meeting?